Okay, we're good to go.
I'm gonna set up my unmute myself here. All right, we're calling the board meeting together. It's for the Minor Site Plan and Subdivision Committee. We're starting at 7:15. So, announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given, and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If you could call the roll, Nora.
Mr. Perelik. Mr. Perelik.
Mr. Perelik.
He's muted.
Ms. Hernandez.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mealy. Also muted.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Ms. Favate. Our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano.
Here.
And Scott, I don't know if you're with us yet or not.
Mr. Perelik is visible in Mr. Mealy's.
I'm here.
There we go. All right, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. We have a resolution first. Nora, if you could go through that, Minor Application Number 20:518. Do I have a volunteer?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Mealy?
A motion to approve the resolution, Application Number 20:518, Rakesh and Asha Malhosra, 521 Powder Mill Road, Block 27, Lot 1, Minor Subdivision.
Okay, do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
Second, Hernandez.
Nora, if you call the...
Ms. Hernandez.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
All right, on our agenda tonight is Application Number 20:523, Blue Property Management, 300 Interpace Parkway, Block 136, Lot 43, Spot 4, Minor Site Plan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Joseph O'Neil of Garofalo O'Neil Richeiro, here on behalf of the applicant. Blue Property Management. This is gonna be for landscape improvements in and around the site. I do have with me Mr. Newman, who will be addressing that. Do we need to address completeness for this?
We do have some completeness issues. Sarah, Susan?
Yes, the application is complete. We did have some comments on the checklist. We recommended a series of waivers, which I won't go through, but they basically pertained to there not being any new building on the site. This is, as Mr. O'Neil just indicated, it's primarily landscaping. There are some landscaping structures, but nothing in the way of the building, and the site is previously developed, so a lot of the checklist items don't particularly apply. We did ask for testimony on protective covenants and deed restrictions in case there are any, or just to confirm that there aren't. We suggested site photos would be helpful for the board's review. There are a couple corrections that we noted for the final plans when they get to the compliance stage in terms of the scale of the north area. We asked for testimony on signage, further landscaping, solid waste, tree removal. Otherwise, it's complete.
We'll be addressing all that in testimony.
That sounds reasonable. Go ahead, Mr. O'Neil.
Thanks, I'd like to get Mr. Newman sworn in for this.
Susan. Who's equipped to do swearing in?
Because I think Mr. Carlson doesn't typically swear for the minor committee.
Yeah, we don't always do that. So move, your case, go ahead.
Mr. Newman, I think we need to transfer power to Mr. Newman to display some exhibits. Can you hear me all right, Mr. Newman? I think you're on mute. There we are.
Can you at all see what's up on my screen?
I can see you, but...
Yeah, I'm trying to... It's not... I'm looking for command on the line.
Stand by a second, I need to make you a presenter.
Yes. Okay. There we go, okay. Perfect. There we go, okay. Can you see my screen now?
We can, yes.
Okay, great. Enlarge that as much as I can, hopefully. There we go. Just lost it. Sorry. It's another size. There we go, okay. So, do you want me to label each of the exhibits I show? There, I have 11 exhibits in total, some of which are very brief, but...
I think you could probably label the package.
Okay.
That makes sense.
That would be great, thank you. So, what I'd like to start with overall, this is the overall site plan of the Morris Corpets Center, which is also known as... The two buildings are 300 Interpace Parkway, which is the front building on the south side, and then One Upper Pond Road, which is on the north side, along Upper Pond Road. So, due north is up on the plan. What we're proposing to do on this is strictly an exterior upgrade. Sorry, I'm trying to expand on this without going too large. There's a pond that exists in the middle between the two buildings. The parking lots, which surround each of the buildings, are separated by landscaped area, which presently has a pond function, pond area right now. There's sidewalks around it, and there's no way to go directly across from one building to the other. You have to sort of circuitously go around the two areas. So, the proposed layout is twofold, what we're proposing to do. One is to be, to create an exterior area that is for sitting, working, meeting, and usually take advantage of the feature that's already there. And the other one is to provide a line of easy, an easy path connection between the two buildings should people want to go back and forth. There's a cafeteria in each building, there are conference centers in each building, fitness centers and things like that. So, there's a natural sort of a reason for people to walk across the campus. And what we're proposing to do, I'll go to the next shot here. Let me zoom in on this. It's not, the image is not coming up on this. Sorry, the image is not coming up on this right now. I'm not sure what's going on here. Just a second, hold them back. Okay, there we go. Oops, sorry, around here. So, this is a view of the existing conditions of the pond right at the center point where it comes together. There is a small, low wall that extends across at the center point of it, which is really just a little bit of a control for the water flowing from one side to the other. We're not proposing to make any changes to the edges of the pond, to the structure of it, or anything else. What we're looking to do is create a landscaped area to the south and a landscaped area to the north that has a little bit of a trellis area on it. And then, just to put a bridge across between the two areas, that would be a prefabricated unit that would expand from one side to the other. There won't be any disturbance at all of the water's edge, and as you can see, there are structures to tie into it from both sides of the space. From a zoning perspective, we've reviewed impervious coverages, you know, percentage of stuff that is built, et cetera. And we're only increasing the overall, by the deck area that we're proposing and the paved surface area at the other side, at the north side. We're only increasing the total impervious coverage by .1% of a, one of a percent, one tenth of a percent. But we're still well under what's allowed on the site, so there are no zoning balances or anything. We're still fully in conformance on this. The, oops, this, sorry. The third item here, then, this is the actual landscaping plan between a landscape architect we've been working with on this, who's also available to speak. So, what you see here is, this is the water area on the right, water area on the left. And then, what we're proposing to do is, on the existing spit of land that occurs right here, we're actually proposing to, from the existing pathway and sidewalk that is here, to create a curving shape of a deck that's slightly raised off the ground. And the reason for the curving shape is twofold. One is puristatics. The other one, which more importantly is, we actually went out there and together, we laid out how this deck would occur on the site, and we actually curved it around existing trees, because we're calling this the grove, because there's this wonderful grove of trees at this area that we really wanted to take at least minimal disturbance of that. So, you'll notice a few locations where we actually curved this quite severely around these areas to preserve those trees and maintain them. This is meant to be a seating area, this area, seating work area, a place for people to come to lunch, et cetera. Then, right at this location, we're going to put the bridge extending across between the two areas. And then, at the north side of the site, we're proposing to do a paved seating area with a low retaining wall that will, again, serve as an open work area and have a trellis shape, which is what you see in this form right here. We have a number of renderings of this as well. One item I should mention, was raised by the planner, which was a good thought. We did originally have, on this side, a set of steps going up from the low area here up to the bridge and then across, and then this would be at grade. And the question was, could we make this ADA? And the answer is yes, actually. And we're going to do that. We're going to just ramp this area down. There is well over 14 or 15 feet here, and we've only got to get 14 inches. So, we're proposing actually to just ramp this section of the deck. So, it'll be fully ADA conforming from one side to the other. And this is actually an aerial view, looking down. As you can see, it's a very heavily vegetated area, and that's one of the reasons we like it. And this area right here, which is the grove, we're going to be maintaining as many of those trees as possible. This area right here, which already has a little bit of a clearing, this is where we're proposing to do the stone paving area right here, as you can see. So, all the sidewalks that already exist in this area, we're gonna maintain those, not changing any of those. And, oops, this is an aerial view, looking from actually the west side. So, you can see, the bridge is going to go across from this area to this area. This all exists, this stone area here, concrete area, the stone edging along the pond, and that's gonna be maintained. On this side, we're proposing to have this paved area with a trellis form, which would be a steel frame and wood cross beams above. And then, on the side over here is the proposed raised decking area. And that's gonna curve around all the areas in the grove. Open seating area. This is a view actually from the south. Am I doing that right? Yeah, from the south, looking towards the... I'm sorry, I'm doing that backwards. Yeah, no, from the south. So, the, as you come along off the sidewalk, this would be the deck raised decking area and heading towards the bridge. Should I, so you can see the pond beyond. You see how we're actually trying to keep the trees and curb the deck around the trees as much as possible, so as if they're growing out of the deck. Again, there'll be landscaping enhancements placed all around this native vegetation. Then, this is the view of the bridge that would lead across the pond at the center area, lead towards the paved space. The next shot is the paving area and the trellis shape up above. Seating area, low retaining wall around this side right here. One of the things you'll notice is there are some low bollards around the site, and I'll address that. The lighting that we're proposing here is really primarily just for evening walking distance. It's downlighting typically, and it'll be more for safety than for anything else. It's not really meant to be a work light out in that area, and it won't cast any light beyond its immediate area. Also, I should mention, and I'll show later, but underneath the bridge, we're proposing to put an LED tape along the edge of the railing. So, again, that'll just shine down, and that'll be a safety lighting on the bridge itself. And then, so these are the examples of what I was just referring to. This is the bollard light they're addressing, and then the LED light will have at the top of the, on the handrail, put an LED light shining down. And the idea is, it's just going to shine immediately down so that you can see the edge of the walkway for safety as you walk across, then to present an attractive light time image as well. And this is a view, again, from the furthest away location, looking back. This is again a view from the west, looking back towards the bridge from a grade. As you can see, it's really, it's meant to be an attractive feature, but it's also covered by a lot of the tree area, and the idea is to really integrate this into the landscaping as much as possible. So, there were a couple items that I'd like to talk about that were addressed by the planner and the engineers' comments. We did talk about lighting. We're not really proposing to have any signage out in this area because there's nothing specific that we're looking to direct people to or from in the area. So, there's nothing proposed at this point. In terms of the furniture that's in there, the images that you've seen are what we've been looking at for the types and styles of furniture. And as part of that, there'll be actually garbage facilities, waste facilities, recyclable centers that'll be placed at each side, because we aren't going to, the intent is to encourage people to use the area for both work and for eating. So, obviously, we need to have facilities out there, and they'll be matching with the furniture, style of furniture that we're creating. There is a minimal amount of tree removal being proposed. There's actually a total of three trees, out of all of them, that were gonna be removed for where the decking area goes. Originally, we had, there was more being planned, but after we walked into detail, we actually worked out the line of exactly where the deck would go. We altered the edging of it to save more of the trees as well. There is a, as per the landscaping plan, a substantial amount of additional landscaping being included on the site. I think that's everything that's addressed on the planners. GPI, the engineers, had a couple of comments I just wanted to address. And one of the items they asked was if there were any water course or riparian zones associated with this water body, and if there are any wetlands are present. And there isn't, there's nothing associated with either of those items on it. This is a man-made pond originally. And then, also, there was a comment that we should seek a soil conservation permit or a letter of no interest from the county. And we actually have applied for that at this point, haven't gotten the answer for them yet. But, and then lastly, we would expect that any of the structures that we're building for the trellis and the low retaining wall that we're putting, which is really just a seating wall, but we'll be filing for that for a construction permit from the township, obviously, for the construction of those items, as well as the bridge connections to footings. That's everything I wanted to address.
Thank you. Just to confirm again, Mr. Newman, I don't think you mentioned that this, this body of water, while it is man-made, but it's also too small to be regulated by NJDEP, is that true?
That's correct.
So, there's no permits or anything needed from them to do this landscape enhancement?
Yes, we confirmed that with the civil engineers, who know the site well.
I have no further questions for this witness?
Mr. Chairman?
Anybody have any questions, or...
Did we lose Tom? I see him.
It's Mr. Mealy.
On mute, Tom. Mr. Dinsmore.
I couldn't get to the unmute button.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, Mr. Mealy.
Yes, Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Newman, I know that you mentioned the area at the one end of the bridge where there are presently some steps. Could you clarify how you would comply with ADA regulations at that end?
Sure. What we're going to do is, as you can see, we're, at this side, we're actually going to be level with the grade. At the other side, we're gonna be slightly off. So, what we're proposing to do is to simply, where we get to the end of this area, we're going to just ramp the deck up at that point. So, right, it's a little difficult to see, I know, but right here, this area, we're going to just, as you can see, there's a long enough area right here. So, we're just gonna gently ramp this up to some level with the bridge. We'll be able to do it well within the 1 to 12 ADA ramp minimum. We'll probably do it slightly over that, because we've got about 14 or 15 feet. So, we'll have like a 1 for 15, actually, gentle ramp that'll just lead up to that.
That's fine, Mr. Newman, thank you.
You bet. It was a good, it was a good call out, actually.
Susan, did he answer all of your questions?
Yeah, I was just confirming, you spoke about the tree removal, that there are three. And I gather that landscaping proposed, which is generally low to shrubs and comparable plantings, is meant to mitigate the loss of those three trees?
Yes. The idea is to really create a nicely landscaped area all around it right here. And it is very important that we, or if we're trying to maintain the grove, and that's what we're calling it, actually, and as much as possible, which is why, as I say, we're being very careful how we're wrapping the deck around those.
Right, yeah, understood. That's, I mean, it's applaudable. Is there any possibility to replace those three trees? Somewhere nearby, or somewhere in this vicinity?
It's possible. I would suggest that if we did, we probably wouldn't put them in this area, because it's already a heavily vegetated area. So, we'd end up probably putting them somewhere else on the site. As you can see, there's quite a lot of vegetation around there already. Where we put them, it would be healthy, and we'd be better off placing them somewhere else in the area, you know?
Okay.
Mr. Canjiano, did they answer your questions?
Yeah, yes, they answered my questions, no additional questions.
Are there any members of the board that have any further questions of this witness? Are there any members of the public that have any questions of this witness? Hearing and seeing none. Susan, is there anything else you want to add or ask before we...
No, Mr. Chairman, I think we're good on this.
Mr. O'Neil, do you have more that you wish to present?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's it. We think this is a significant improvement there, and it's gonna really be beautiful to look at. We're looking forward to it.
Are there any members of the public who have any comments or any questions at this time?
I've enabled raise hand now.
Yes. Taran Mada? Can you unmute Taran Mada?
One second. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Wonderful presentation. It's just, I know we gotta do with this technology, but with this graphics, at about 20% of the total zoom, it's really difficult to really see all that. But, other than that, it really does look great. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak at this time? If you raise your hand. Nora, is there anyone else?
I'm just checking it out, hold on. I do not see anyone else at this time. If Taran would put his hand down, I'd appreciate it. Unless he has another question. Or a comment. Okay. You put it down.
All right.
Just trying to get used to this technology.
Yes, we're all doing that. Requires patience. And good hard workers. All right, Susan, Andrew, I guess we covered everything that is of interest in your notes.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody on the board who would like to make a motion at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Application Number 20:523, Blue Property Management, 300 Interpace Parkway, Block 136, Lot 43.4 of the Minor Site Plan.
We have a second?
Mealy, second.
All right, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Perelik. Mr. Perelik. Ms. Hernandez.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Mealy.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, have a great night. See you shortly.
All right. I did not ask beforehand if there was anybody in the public for the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee, if they had any business to be brought before this Minor Site Plan Committee that is not on docket. If you please raise your hand, if you have such business. Is there any, Nora?
I'm checking. I do not see anyone.
All right, then, a motion to conclude tonight's festivities is in order. Do I have a motion to adjourn to...
Adjourn to...
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Yep. We have a second?
We have a second.
Second, Perelik.
Oh, in favor, aye.
Aye, aye.
We're adjourned. Mr. Von Aken, it's all up to you now.
Thank you.
And thank you, Tom.
That's what I'm making to you, Tom.
Can you folks hear me?
Scott?
I can hear you, Scott.
Hey, Nora, thank you.
I can hear you, Scott.
Sorry to hear that.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
And do we have the planning board assembled? Looks like we have quorum.
Looking good, Chairman.
Very good. Okay. Let's get started then. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given, and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Perelik.
Here.
Councilman Andy Piero.
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Fergieri.
Here.
Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Chairman Von Aken.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Favate. We also have our bad, our board planner, Ms. Fafate, our board attorney, Mr. Carlson, and our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano.
All right, very good. Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance for the planning board meeting.
Your honor. I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Before we start with the regular agenda, are there any members of the public that have something to present which is not on tonight's agenda? Please go ahead and raise your hands if you do have something to present which is not on tonight's agenda. Okay, seeing no hands raised, we'll move on. There are a number of resolutions which I, which we will add on the agenda for tonight, which we will need to post home. Application number 2505, 2508, 2525, 2510, and 2512.
Chairman, Chairman, let me interrupt.
Go ahead.
As discussed with you, the resolution that's ready for tonight is the Lanardex Resolution. The others are not prepared or before the board tonight. I would ask that we take action on the Lanardex Resolution. And as discussed with you, I would, I would ask that we consider a special meeting one week from today to simply adopt the balance of the resolutions, which should take about five minutes.
All right, and Mr. Board Attorney, are there any, any kind of notice that would need to be given for those resolutions?
Yeah, I mean, there will be notice of the special meeting that will be required, which Nora could, Nora could, could take care of the 40-hour notice.
Okay. Right. Do we have any members of the board who will be able to attend a meeting one week from today at 7:30? For about five minutes to cover these resolutions?
I can make that.
Mr. Frigiri.
Mandel can make that.
Mandel can make that.
I see Judy raising her hand.
I will be in, I will be in quarantine at that time. So if it's via WebEx, no problem. If it's in person, I can't do it.
It will certainly be an online meeting. And as many of you know, I've been dealing with a, with, with, with some family health issues that are preventing me from getting it done. That said, I will be able to do all these over the long weekend.
Okay, very good.
Then I will be there.
So I believe we are okay. We'll have a quorum for the meeting on Monday.
Nora, Nora, are you okay to notice in, in a meeting for Mondays at 30?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Very good. So we will postpone all of those other resolutions until next Monday's meeting. The resolution we will take on tonight is application 19519. Have all the board members received the, the resolution? Are they okay to move forward with approval of that resolution at this time?
I'm willing to move it at this time.
Okay.
Frigiri also.
Very good.
It's okay. Just asking, procedurally, it's okay to do this without hard copies because we received it via email. Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion regarding application 19:519.
I think I just moved that and Mr. Frigiri seconded.
That sounds right to me. Nora, can we take our vote, please?
Mr. D. Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken.
Yes.
Let's adopt it.
Very good. And with the resolutions now taken care of, we have our first application coming forward. I believe the first one we're going to take care of tonight is 20.519. Rashad Mystery, 4 Mary Ann Place, Block 626, Lot 17.10, major soil movement permit. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, you said 519. Isn't that the Lanardex application that you just okayed?
I see this as 20.519 as opposed to 19.719. So that's a very good call out.
And, and let, let, let me just add for the board members, I am dealing with family members' health issues kind of actively tonight. To that end, the chairman has graciously agreed to square the witnesses in his capacity as chairman. So he's going to go ahead and do that tonight. I will be here, but I apologize if I am distracted.
I don't mean to interrupt. We have to announce, um, application 2516 that we're carrying it. It's on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
To do that first.
All right. Mr. Von Aken, this is Earl. I'm sorry, who just spoke? Earl?
Earl, IT. Can the panelists take a look at the attendee list and see if anyone needs to be elevated to a panelist? Because some, a few of them have come in that way and I've elevated them. I want to make sure I get everyone. Thank you.
Before we do that, Earl, why don't we go ahead and carry the, the one application that has to be carried? Or at least, so that will at least clear that.
Okay. And Scott, do we, is a motion required for that?
Yeah, we need a motion to carry the application to a date certain, which Nora will provide without further notice. So anyone that's here on that application should know that they will not receive further notice and it will be heard on the date that Nora is going to now provide.
That would be January 11th, 2021.
Okay. Nora, it looks like you were all ready for that. You had it on the agenda as such.
Yes.
Very good. Okay, so I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that motion.
Good. Mr. Dinsmore needs a second?
Frigiri, second.
All right, Mr. Frigiri, second. Nora, please call a vote.
Please call a vote.
Mr. Aperilis.
Mr. Aperilis.
Yes.
Mr. D. Piero.
Mr. D. Piero.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri.
Mr. Frigiri, yes.
Mr. Frigiri, yes.
Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Mendel. Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken.
Yes.
Did I get Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, very good. We'll now go ahead forward with application 20.519. Rashad Mystery, and I believe I've already announced the rest of that. Are you ready to present? Mr. Mystery, are you there? I think I see you're on mute at this time. Mr. Mystery, are you there, please?
Yeah, there we go.
Ah, very good, sir.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Mystery. I see that there's another mystery on the attendee list. Do you need anybody else promoted to help you present tonight?
Yeah, I think Ronak is my son. And I also have my engineer, Mr. Adnan Khan. He's right here.
Okay. So. Are you on top of that, Earl? I think I already saw it move. I think you're ahead of me.
Yes, I, I promoted one person.
All right, very good.
And Mr. Mystery is going to be a presenter? Um, yes, and I will, if I have any questions or you have any questions, my engineer, Mr. Khan, will also answer it.
Okay, well, we're here to help you, sir. So.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind, let's see. I'm not seeing that we have any witnesses. You'll just be presenting?
Yes.
Very good. Okay.
I'm sorry, Chairman. He does have a witness, Adnan Khan. It's his engineer.
Oh, okay.
He's been on this here.
I, I see there, sir. Okay. So when you bring on your engineer, we'll just need to swear them in. Why don't you present your, your project and at which case you can let your engineer do the rest of the work there.
You want me to present it, please?
Sure, just give us a brief description of your project. Or if you'd like your engineer to do that, let me know.
Um, I think I'll start. What happened is exactly, just a little history. The house had a massive fire on January 2018. And I've been a resident of the Parsipony for almost over 27 years. And, you know, last three years has been very difficult trying to put the light back together. Now the house is almost complete and we tried to settle in here. And it's, it's a little rough going now. The story with the application is, you know, we did the backyard filling and everything. I never had the basement before, so we did, we put a little basement here. And whatever the, I believe the excess soil which came out of the basement, the backyard was a little low, so we filled it in, considering that there is no drainage issue or nothing. And we also had the permit taken last year for the soil moving. Everything went well. The engineering department of Parsipony, they inspected the whole site, no question. Only thing the engineer brought to the point is that, you know, the amount of soil that we filled it in is slightly more than what the permit allows, which I had no idea. I thought I had the permit. But he made a mention that, you know, it's called minor soil movement permit, which I had originally taken from the engineering department. So what he suggested is that everything is, he has no questions or concern, everything. I have a letter from him and he's in agreement with everything what we have done. However, he suggested that I would apply for the major soil moving permit. I mean, for me, which I did according to his suggestion right next day. And that's what I'm here for.
Okay. Would you, would you like your engineer to give us a more detailed description of the project at this time?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Khan, are you ready to give testimony? Okay, very good. You're all set to, to swear in. Mr. Khan, do you swear? Could you give your name and, and credentials for the benefits of the board?
Sure. My name is Adnan Khan. I'm with AWZ Engineering. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, master's in construction management, over 30 years of experience, testified in front of this board and the zoning board in Parsipony, and over hundreds of boards throughout New Jersey, accepted as an expert witness in Superior Court and testified. And I'm professional engineer, engineer in four states, certified municipal engineer in New Jersey. And as I mentioned, it's like I'm the engineer of record for this project.
Very good. And do you swear that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very good.
If I can get the permission to share my screen, I would just like to put the site plan on the script.
Sure, go ahead and take care of that. With that said, do any members of the board have any issues with the, with this witness's credentials? All right. Mr. Khan, you're accepted as a witness. Please continue.
Okay, actually. Okay, this is pretty much the lot grading plan that we prepared for the house, which was, I mean, this is not the one that was approved, but this is an as-built based on the conditions that the, the grading that the township engineer mentioned that we, or the applicant might have exceeded the requirement for, so that it kicks into a major lot movement or soil movement. So this just gives an idea, like I think this is the area in the back that has been filled up. And this triggers the requirement to apply for a major soil movement for this project. And as you can see, like the, based on the grading, we don't see any issues or the, based on the fill, we don't see any issues that is impacting any adjacent properties. Most of the work is already done. The only item that is left is this construction of the retaining wall that I believe the applicant has already purchased the materials and they are ready to start the construction. Besides that, all the grading is pretty much done. And as you can see, we are creating swales to collect any water from the site and then diverting it into the existing drain that exists on the property. So that's pretty much what we are looking for at this point is the major soil movement permit application because of the amount of fill that's been brought in and used on the site.
Understood. Mr. Canjiano, do you have any questions regarding the, what the testimony?
No, I don't have any question. And just as a matter of note, this, this is a lot grading plan that was reviewed by the township engineer. And this is here for the soil movement. It appears it's about 300 yards of material. Maybe it's about 17 trucks. So it's, it's a nominal amount of material. I, I don't have any issues with it. And as I look at the grading plan, again, as, as the applicant just testified, it is, it's draining into drainage swales within the property and not being directed to the adjoining property. So I, I don't have any issues with it.
All right, very good. Ms. Fafate, any comments from you?
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I actually don't review soil movement permits. I leave it to the engineers, so.
I figured as much. I just didn't want to leave you out.
Thank you.
Okay. Any members of the board have questions for this witness? Okay. Well, with that said, Mr. Mystery, is there anything else you want to present about your application before we entertain a motion?
Make sure to open it to the public.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Nora. Mr. Mystery, you're, you're on mute right now.
Hello, can you hear me, please?
Yes, I can, Mr. Mystery.
All I wanted to say is that everything seems to be okay. We, I also spoke to the neighbor and she would like to see that low modular block wall, I guess it's called landscape wall, where she feels okay. So I agreed to build that wall. And as soon as we get this approval, I'm going to start that. All the material and everything has been bought out. I just got to call them to deliver and the contractor is also lined up to do the construction. I mean, it's, it's probably about two blocks starting with and probably three, three and a half blocks at the middle portion. It's a very low modular block wall. That's what I was told. And it's going to go pretty quick. Soon as I get this approval, I'm going to start this so we have no issue with anything. Soon as I get this approval, I'm gonna start this, so we have no issue with anything.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mystery. Um, are there any members of the public that have any questions at this time?
I see Rosa Brightug has her hand up if she could be unmuted.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Rosa.
Okay, my name is Rosa Vitok. I live in Six Marion Place in Parsippany. I live next door to Mr. and Mrs. Harshad Mystery. Uh, Mr. Mystery made his yard four to five feet higher than mine, and I'm very worried of the runoff all going to my property, which is gonna be dangerous to me and my family, especially my grandkids. Very slippery, lots of mud and water. We're already on a high water table. The Morris County Soil Inspector said lots of water and putting more soil on that area will kill the trees. And if that happens, they're gonna fall on his and my other neighbor, Mr. Hess' property. And then we're gonna have more problems. Since Mr. Mystery did his major soil, I've always checked my basement for any water. I've noticed my sump pump is working more. In the beginning, he said that our yard will be even. Then he put his major soil this time. He said he's gonna put a wall. Then he changed it again. He said he's gonna put a berm in which he used part of my property because of the grading. I asked engineer Paul Niehop why he gave him the permit to put this, uh, four to five feet, uh, high soil on his property. And Mr. Niehop said he didn't. He, he said Mr. Mystery just did it himself and told Mr. Niehop that we get along and there won't be any problem, wherein he knows I have a big problem and I tell him every time I see him. On November fourteenth, Saturday, Mr. Mystery and his son came over and say they wanna follow up on the last conversation. So he said he's gonna start, uh, he's gonna start the wall that Monday, the sixteenth. And there was no movement, the seventeenth, there's no movement. So I, I messaged him and he said he's waiting for the permit. But he didn't tell me that he talked to Mr. Niehop and was advised to wait until tonight's meeting. That's for now.
Okay, is is that conclude your, your comments, Ms. Vitok?
Yes.
Okay.
For now, yeah.
Okay, su- sure. Um, Mr. Mystery, how would you like to address, um, your neighbor's concerns?
Yes, um, um, I did sit down with Rosa on November fourteenth, uh, with my son. And, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, right, right there. Um, we sat down with, um, Rosa and we talked about, you know, the soil moving and everything. Now, you know, um, what she told me is that, look, yeah, there's a fill there. And I agree that we did three yards more fill, and that's what we are here today, filing the major soil moving permit over three hundred yard total. Um, but she did agree that, look, as long as you build a wall, as for the plan, she has no any further question or concern, which I agree. And I also, and I also showed her all the purchase order for all the materials and everything. I mean, she wanted to keep the wall going, but at the same time, I also, before I start the wall, I sent a little trickler to the township engineer, who I always stay in touch with before I do anything. And Mr. Paul Niehop, he advised me that, you know, I would wait until this meeting is over and then you can, once you get the approval, you can start your wall. So wall is not in question as far as the construction is concerned. I have an email here for Mr. Niehop regarding the wall. I also have the email, um, which she allowed for this, uh, fill and everything that we did in the backyard. So everything is here. He is in agreement with everything what we have done. And in fact, he's the one who suggested that, look, everything seems to be all right. But then, you know, your minor soil moving permit, which applies up to ninety or hundred yard, I don't know these yard, it's about two hundred yard. And you did probably about three hundred yard, as Chairman mentioned. Um, you have to go and file the major soil moving permit, which is what I did and we are discussing right now. As far as the issue with the wall with my neighbor, I mean, everything is lined up, like I said. Um, and it's gonna be constructed very soon, as soon as they get the approval from, um, the planning board. And here is the purchase order. I'll show it to Rosa, too. All the materials and everything has been bought out. I'm just waiting for your green signal. So we can go and start the wall, which will eliminate all the questions and doubts she has, to keep her happy.
Sure, and Mr. Harshad, you, you, you know, the, uh, the purchase of your materials is not relevant to this board at this time. But, um, I would like you to please make sure you send on the, um, uh, the, the note from the town, uh, engineer, which, uh, you had an email correspondence with, so that we can include it into the notes or into the record. Uh, okay, and so please go ahead and, and send that on to, um, uh, to the planning department so that we can include that in the notes here. Well.
How do I, how do I do that? Right now?
Okay, uh, when the meeting is done, please.
Okay.
Okay. Um, uh, regarding the structure of the wall and a concern of the witness, uh, for, uh, potential drainage and such, uh, Mr. Khan, would you please speak to, to the project and whether or not you expect any of the drainage to, to move over to the neighbor's properties?
Sure, I can do that. Uh, originally, as, uh, Mr. Mystery mentioned, that, uh, when we first designed this project, we had this wall, uh, to the, uh, west of the property, uh, right here. Then during the course, when, uh, uh, the contractor started backfilling the rear yard, he came to with an idea that instead of a wall, we can probably just go with the berm and, uh, eliminate the wall altogether. And I think that's when, uh, uh, he did some grading and he tried to create a berm. And then Morris County Soil Conservation District, as again, as, uh, Mr. Mystery had obtained a permit from them, they came and they visited, uh, the site and they issued a report with some comments about the soil stabilization and the drainage and things like that. Uh, then, then what we, uh, our company requested, Mr. Mystery, is to get an as-built survey done of the property so that we can evaluate what are the issues with the drainage, uh, after the fill has been placed on the property and how it's been graded. And then once the as-built survey is complete, and this is the ba- the base plan on this, uh, drawing, is based on the as-built survey. So we looked at it, the as-built survey, and we came with the idea that, okay, the berm is not going to work as far as the drainage or the water going into the neighbor's property. So we asked Mr. Mystery is to, let's get back to the, we'll get, let's build the wall so that we can eliminate this drainage issue. And that's when he agreed to it, and then he went ahead, uh, with the purchase of the material and all that stuff, until like, um, he was told, like, just to wait to start the construction before we get the major soil movement permit. And that's what you see is like this plan that you see right in front of you is the plan that shows how the grading will work once the wall is built. And you can see like it's not, we are creating a, in front of the wall, we are creating a swell. But it's not directing any water on the adjacent lot, Six Marion. In fact, it's draining all the way down to the bottom and then it's, uh, and again, it goes either to the back, which is the, the right of way for the highway. And any water from the backyard is collected through the swales into this inlet. That's how we graded. So based on this grading, and this is the final grading, that once everything is done, the topsoil is placed, uh, grasses, uh, seeds are, are placed and everything, and the gladgrass germinate. Uh, this, in my opinion, I don't see that there will be any water there will be running off this property to Six Marion. And again, like, there is some work to be done, once the, once the wall is done and after the final grading, uh, the issue or the concern that the neighbor has is going to be eliminated completely.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mystery, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna add a little note to Mr. Khan's, um, uh, comment. Um, you know, um, right now as it stands, um, we, we were trying to, um, you know, cut the cost on the wall and make it a little bit economical for me. Um, we created the berm and swell, which works absolutely fine, in my opinion, and even, even engineers agree. I mean, we had, we, we had three, four instances in last two, two and a half months that this situation has been here with the swales and berms. I took videos and photos and everything, all right? Not a single problem that the water runoff is going on the other side or, or making any issues. Um, relatively, everything works, but besides the point, you know, if Rosa wants to see the wall, I agree with her to make the wall and, you know, you will get the problems in future. So that's where I stand right now.
All right, uh, I'm gonna go back to Rosa really quick and then I'll, I'll invite the board to, to ask any additional questions. I don't, I don't wanna be occupying this all myself. Um, Rosa, were there any other, uh, comments or questions we wanted to make at this time?
Um, when, uh, I looked at, I went to the town hall in the building department. I got a copy of his survey, and I have one before, too, that he gave me. Uh, I see that his, uh, his survey is different than mine. Supposedly, there's four of us here, the number four, six, eight, and I guess the last, uh, house is number ten. We all have a buffer on his, uh, on, on the survey that he gave me. He doesn't have the buffer, uh, and, uh, when I asked for the permit on my, uh, for the minor soils, it took them a long time to give me the permit because of the, my, because of the buffer. So I don't know what happened, uh, how he was able, and I asked my other neighbor, Mr. Hess, who is more, um, familiar with the buffer. Uh, and, uh, we compared our, uh, uh, survey, and he has the buffer, I have the buffer, he doesn't have the buffer. If you, uh, I mean, uh, I think Mr. Hess is, uh, is, uh, is joined, is, uh, here with us, and he can explain it better than me if you would, uh, let him, uh, talk.
Oh, uh, sure. Um, are there any other members of, okay, I see Mr. Hess's hand raised. Um, could you please unmute Mr. Hess?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I'm here. How are you?
Could you please give your name and address for the benefit of the board?
Yes, it's Michael Hess, Eight Marion Place, Parsippany.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to know that, too, because I've been in front of the planning board twice because of the buffer zone. We're not allowed to use it. Um, I spent over five thousand dollars, uh, to use my land in the buffer zone. Um, and I, I was under the understanding that we could not remove the buffer zone from our surveys. Uh, I, I would just like to know how he got his removed from his surveys.
Uh, I'm gonna admit, I am not familiar with that part of our, uh, our ordinances.
Because technically, we're not supposed to, um, cut trees down or anything like that. Uh, according to my understanding of being in front of you guys twice, uh, that it was for the noise or for Route eighty. Um, so me personally, I did not cut trees down to have it, to anything done. I put a shed up and a, a shed and a garage in my yard and a fence that really protects the sound from coming forward. Um, so that's why I was approved for it. Um, but in that same respect, I tried to get the buffer zone removed completely. Um, my understanding is that we can't. Um, now, I see that my other neighbors are cutting trees down and doing stuff to take away the buffer zone, the noise from the noise. And I, I just like, like I said, I just spent five thousand dollars two times in front of you guys to, to use my property. And I'd like to know how this is being done without spending any money, because then I would like to do that.
Uh, so you're referring to the rear buffer zone?
Yes, we have a rear, all four houses have an eighty-foot buffer zone from the property line. Every time I try to do something in the buffer zone, I have to go in front of you guys or there's a problem. I have to get a lawyer and I have to talk to the town lawyer and everything. There's a lot of issues going on at my end, and all four of us have the buffer. And I've asked Mr. Mystery about it and no, you're like, nobody can really give me too many answers. You know, I, I, I just, you know, I don't even know, like, me personally, like, I understand the noise level, but even with the trees, like, I was told I can't cut nothing down. And honestly, I would like to cut some trees down. The trees fall. And now that there, we do have a high water table, and now if we get more water, and especially that the ground's being raised up, that's gonna end up killing the trees. Our trees by our house are about eighty, about eighty feet tall. I've already had some trees crash land in my yard and destroy my property. Uh, I just don't wanna keep having this issue. Uh, I would like to cut all the trees down so I don't have that problem, because I get a lot of damage on my property because of it. And I just don't want added damage because of either water, some issues going on, you know, with all this stuff basically going on right now.
I'd just like to clear something up. Uh, as far as the buffer goes, or not being on Mr. Mystery's, um, survey, it's because whoever surveyed this property did not do, um, the background work to know about the buffer and include it on the property. You cannot, you, you can't delete the buffer. You just can't get rid of it. And second, Mr. Hess is speaking about applications he had in front of the Board of Adjustment, not the planning board.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay, no, it's a, it's a fair mistake. Um, I, I guess my concern is, uh, uh, um, do we have somebody here who can speak to the buffer and what the rules are there? And would that apply to soil movement as well?
Well, according to a, a paper that I have here, um, it says, hold on for one second, where is it? It says, um, no change in grade or removal of vegetation will be permitted. And that's, uh, application number seventy-eight dash zero-two-nine.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm looking in the code right now. I'll do my best. This board, as you know, typically doesn't deal with single-family zoning issues because they typically come before the Board of Adjustment, but I am checking for you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, this is, uh, Andrew Kanjia. I wanted to add what Mr., uh, Planner just said. Uh, this, the application, if it was reviewed by the township, it was a compliant, uh, application with regard to zoning and buffers, it would be reviewed by the Township Engineering Office, which it appears that it is under review by the Township Engineering Office. And had they had any deviations, it would have gone to the Board of Adjustment. Uh, I, one suggestion I would offer is that any approval this board gives would be conditional on the Township Engineering's office, uh, uh, approval of any site plan or any other conditions.
Thank, thank you for that, Mr. Kanjia. That certainly makes sense. Um, you know, I, I have, I've sort of been taking this over myself. Are there any members of the planning board with questions at this time?
Yeah, this is Steve Mandell. Number one, the buffer zone that he's referring to is at the, I'm assuming that's the north end of the property, the, the widest part?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's the first one. Second one is, I wanted to address to Andrew, um, if I may, do you agree with, uh, Mr. Khan's, uh, results after the grading that there will be no detriment to the neighbor's property?
Um, I, 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 I've not reviewed this application. I've not seen it. I, I, I've not reviewed this application, I've not seen it before. I do, without opening a can of worms, I do have several questions, many questions on the application, but it's not in my purview to be reviewing the, the site plan and all the other issues. That was reviewed, it appears, by the Township Engineering Office. So I don't want, I, you know, I, I have a lot of questions, is it in the floodplain, is it not? There's various questions on, on, on the, you know, the, the, the actual nuts and bolts of the plan and the improvements. But at face value, I can't answer if what the old grades were, what's allowed and what's not allowed. But, so anyway, that's, that's my, I, I hesitate to give an answer to that question because I've not reviewed it, and I don't have the original existing condition survey, and I've not reviewed all the parameters involved with it.
That's very good, Andrew, you can run for office now.
But again, it shouldn't really be had any, if there's, if there's not approval by the Township Engineering Office, this is, in my opinion, should not be giving approval to the soil movement portion of it. Again, the, these issues should be reviewed by, by the Township Engineer, and if it is beyond, if there's any deviations from the zoning, it should go to the Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Fageri here.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna suggest, I don't mean to make this more involved than it needs to be, but depending on what our planner has to report from her rather dutiful research there. Should we, is Mr. Carlson available at the moment, just for how to proceed here legally? I'm not even sure what the order is.
Well, before we go there, you know, our packet included a letter from the municipal engineer, Justin Liza, outlining the, that the office has no objection to the soil moving application.
You're right, see that, yep.
So that, that's where I'm feeling conflicted. So with that in mind, Ms. Favate, were you able to find anything of relevance to this application?
I'm sorry to say that I wasn't. The 80-foot buffer from, which I imagine is from Route 80, is, is something that's not familiar to me as, as part of the zoning code. It may be elsewhere in the township code. It may have something to do with the right-of-way, state right-of-way, I'm just not, haven't had to look at it in the course of this, this five minutes.
Okay, so I wasn't alone there. Hi. Mr. Carlson, are you available?
I'm here.
We seem to have some, some uncertainty involved in this application, I'm not sure how much you've been able to keep up. We do have a, a note from our municipal engineer indicating that this, that the engineer has no objection to the soil moving application. We also have testimony from the, from the applicant's engineer indicating that water movement appears to not be impacting neighbor's property, but what's been brought up is whether or not there's an 80-foot buffer zone against the rear of the property. And I'm not sure how to move forward on this, that, with that last call out.
Perhaps best that we hold off on adjudicating this until such time as the applicant can come back and show us that that's not an issue.
Shouldn't the engineer have been able to, or have referenced that in their?
Oh, I, I would think so, but so long as we're within time to decide the application, and I assume we're well within that, there, there, there's, there's no issue in holding off on adjudicating it.
Okay, excuse me, I have a question.
That said, that said, it, it sounds as though both our planner and our engineer have not identified any issue, but if the neighbor is identifying one, you know, I have no problem giving them a moment to properly articulate that.
Excuse me for one second, can I speak, it's Michael Hess?
Please.
So what happens is with the engineer, because this is, this is exactly what happened with me. When I talked to zoning, when I first, when it first initially happened to me to get a permit for my shed, I was told in zoning, because I, I didn't even know nothing about the buffer zone initially.
Time out, time, time out, time out, who is this?
Michael Hess.
This is a member of the public.
Yes, yes.
You're the neighbor?
Yeah, I'm the next-door neighbor. I'm the one, I have the buffer zone too, and I'm the, I was the one that had a lot of issues with my buffer zone, so that's why I know a lot about it.
Okay, con, con, continue.
Okay, I'm sorry. So my understanding was, when I officially, when I initially put the permit for my shed, I was denied instantly for it because of, it's on my survey. And then when I went to zoning and talked to them about it, they had no information on it. They said that it's an old buffer, and the reason that they knew about it is because of my survey. So the reason the engineer is not saying nothing about it is because it's not on his survey. And that's why I asked how he got it removed, when I'm under the understanding that you cannot have it removed. Because I would love to get mine removed, because it costs me thousands of dollars every time I wanna use my, my land that I paid property tax on to use it. I gotta get a lawyer and all this stuff to do this, and pay your guy's lawyer to settle up the paperwork for me to use my land that I pay property tax on. So that's, nobody's saying nothing about it, because nobody knows nothing about it. But it is there, I have a copy of the, the whole survey of the whole block. I have all the information. Anybody wants information, I can very easily drop it off, because I have it all, because it annoyed me that I even had it.
So, Mr. Carlson, my, I guess my question is, seeing as there's no buffer on this, on this survey, and the engineer has provided testimony, or has provided their, their memorandum with no objections, as, as much as I appreciate the neighbor's concerns, is the buffer something we, we need to consider?
I, I, I've heard nothing that would prevent the board from voting on this tonight.
Okay. Alright, and certainly the, the buffer is something that needs to be looked at, but probably not the responsibility of this board, is that fair?
No, I, I think it's been considered, and the board engineers weighed in on, on that, so.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy?
Yes, Mr. Mealy, please go ahead.
Regarding the memo from Justin Liza, the municipal engineer, if you have it handy, item number eight says the drywall design will need to be revised in order to collect three inches of runoff from the roof. Now, isn't that something that needs to be done?
That is already done, it's taken care of.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, it sounds as if the, the applicant has testified that that has been addressed. Is, is that something that you've made adjustments to since the August 13th letter?
Yes, the, the plan was revised to address that comment.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
It would seem to me, from even from the comments that Mr. Carlson made, perhaps this application should be carried forward. There are too many issues that are up in the air, and no one seems to have an answer. Could we carry this forward as a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fageri here.
Let me just see if I can address Mr. Mealy. I, I think your point is certainly worth consideration. My concern is, we certainly don't want to hold up a legitimate application for testimony which is also not represented with, 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 you know, adequate findings. And we have a survey which, for one reason or another, is not complete, and we also have the letter from our board engineer. So I, I think your point is worth considering, I am still considering that. But I, I'm, I'm a little uncertain also. Mr. Fageri, your question?
Yeah, I, I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's also in the same packet, and this, I didn't hear this addressed, a letter from Morris County Soil Conservation District dated November 16, where it states that this application is administratively incomplete. And he goes into a little bit of detail, everyone, it's on our package, we can see it. I don't know if that's binding on us, or how that impacts what we're talking about here, but we usually don't vote yes or vote on projects where a letter says something is, is incomplete. So I'm just throwing that out there for clarification. I haven't come across an application like this in my time on the board thus, thus far.
Alright, that's a, that's a fair point, Mr. Fageri. I saw that also, I think my, my concern there was, this is also not a, a board we normally receive feedback from, and it's not one of our, our municipal boards, but I'd certainly be interested, it looks as if our, let's see, who else received this?
Let me add that, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Please go ahead.
All of our approvals are contingent on the applicant getting all other relevant approvals. So, you know, we should not hold applicant up for not having received, you know, whether it's county or state or whatever it may be approvals.
Okay, that's a fair point. Yeah, I, I mean, normally with, with municipal, I'm sorry, with residential applicants, I would hate to have to require the applicant to come back again, although I, I certainly understand the frustrations of, of the neighbors and the, and the concerns thereof. Are there any other members that have, of the board that have questions or?
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Tom.
Sure, Mr. Dinsmore, go ahead.
Yeah. As Mr. Carlson has quite correctly put it, basically all we're doing is saying, yes, you can move the soil. We are not giving them permission to violate any buffer zone, we're not giving them permission to do anything that would require a variance of any sort, or that is violating any rules that for one reason or another the township engineer didn't see. And if later, upon later review, he says, oh, by golly, I, I missed that, there is something that I missed. We're not giving them permission to do it, we're just saying, yes, you can move the soil.
Well stated, Mr. Dinsmore, thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the board with a question or concern at this time? Mr. Chairman? I think I heard Mr. Fageri first.
I was just gonna say, I don't, my, my observation is, is that the cure for the drainage problem could be a violation of the buffer, based on, I, I don't know that for a fact. So that, I'm, just, this is just my reading of the plan as it's presented in the screen share.
Yeah, but Mr. Fageri, you're, you're also taking into account a buffer which has not been presented into evidence.
I understand that.
Okay.
But I've also heard testimony that says it's applicable.
No, we haven't heard testimony, we've heard a comment from the neighbors.
That's true, okay.
Which, which I don't wanna underplay, but it's not, it's not testimony, and it's not evidence.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Mandell here.
Yes, Mr. Mandell.
The reason that we have a dispute of the buffer is that this was an as-built survey done after the fact, probably with no prior knowledge of the existing surveys. So that, that's the reason why we have this dispute, whether there's a buffer or no buffer. That would be my guess. Now, my concern is still, are we, is this going to take care of the neighbor or make it tremendously worse for the neighbor? And, you know, it's, it's not been answered fully, in my view, and it may be best to delay our consideration of this.
May I say something?
I, I think, Mr. DPR, did you have something to say?
John?
Yes, I did, I was just.
Yeah, Mr. DPR?
I have two problems. Perhaps because of this site plan, the engineer did not address a buffer because he does not see it on this plan.
Thank you.
It exists. I, I would like to have him double-check and see if indeed there is a buffer, even though it doesn't show up on this plan, and if that would change his recommendation. That's, that's number one. And I, I don't wanna hold up the application, but I, I think we need a couple of subject twos if we're going to approve this soil moving permit. One is subject to the engineer reviewing a buffer, if it does or does not exist, and what that does to his recommendation. The other subject to is, does that affect the drainage plan at all if this buffer cannot be interfered with?
I think those points are very well taken, Mr. DPR. And if a motion is brought forward on this, I, I agree that those are definitely, should be included. Ms. Hernandez?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good after Councilman DePiero spoke.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any other members of the board with a, with a question or comment at this time? Okay, it seems to me we, we have two options at this time. One is to consider delaying this motion until we hear back from the engineer, or the other option is that we can make a motion contingent on the engineer as presented by Mr. DiPiero. I guess, Mr. Carlson, i- is there a position that you have on that which would be beneficial for the boards to hear?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think this is a pretty straightforward application.
Okay. Well, with that in mind, I guess, is there a motion from the board at this time?
Wanna hear any more comments from the public?
No. Thank you for that, Mr. Dinsmore. I do see a hand is raised by the public. Ms. Vitug? Could you please have her taken off of mute? Thank you.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. I just wanna let you know that I spoken to Mr. Nehof, the engineer that did the inspection on his, on Mr. and Mrs. property. And when I mentioned the buffer, he said when he went there, he wasn't aware that there was a buffer, because on the survey, they didn't have any buffer. So, so, second, on that, I think I've, I've heard about the letter from Mr. Justin Liza, municipal engineer, that letter. If you may, I, I would like to read it. The soil movement of the property exceeds more than 100 cubic yard, therefore, a major soil moving permit is required. This office has agreed to allow the recommendation.
Chairman, I don't, I don't, I'm sorry to interrupt, but who is speaking right now?
This is a member of the public again, Mr. Carlson.
We've closed public comment?
We, we invited one more comment, please.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
I can continue?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. This office has agreed to allow the recommendation of the, of the certificate of occupancy while the property owner is waiting for the board meeting. The property owner has agreed to follow recommendation by the board of this office if the, if their major soil moving application is denied. If the application is approved, no further action from the soil movement is required. But when I spoke to them, because I got a copy, I went to the engineering department, I got this copy, and I, because I had a long talk with Mr. Nehof, and he said that they sympathize with him because, you know, he's been out of his house for, for almost three years. So they let him, they issued the certificate of occupancy to move in. But then penned, and also, but the, but the major soil is pending upon the, uh, the board meeting approval.
Is that all you have for your comments?
Yeah.
Ms. Vitok?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. At this time, not seeing any other comments for public portion, we'll go ahead and close that. And with that said, is there a motion from the board at this time?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to this soil movement application, I agree with Mr. DiPiero that there needs to be some subject twos here. I would move the application subject to a further review by the municipal engineer and any other of our professionals that could look into the status of this buffer, which we clearly don't know enough about, as to how that would affect whether or not the municipal engineer would approve this project. Especially if the movement of the soil would not be allowed under the, this, the strict scrutiny of the buffer. And that is my motion at this point. But I'm more than happy to listen to other members of the board on their thoughts as to whether there should be more subject twos.
I think another subject two was whether or not the drainage was in, was potentially impacting the buffer zone as well.
Yes, I, I think I sort of embedded that in there, but I agree that making it more explicit makes sense.
Okay. Any other members of the board have a subject two which needs to be added to this? Am I following the right procedure here, Mr. Carlson?
You are.
Okay. Are there any other subject twos which we want to add to the motion for Mr. Dinsmore at this time?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy.
Yeah, Mr. Mealy.
I would tend to agree with Mr. Dinsmore's comments that it be conditioned, if approved, it be conditioned upon whatever the municipal engineer needs to do.
Okay. So I believe we have, we have the need for a second review by the engineer specifically considering a potential buffer zone.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel, yes.
I'd also like it subject to concurrence on, by the power board's engineer that this will not impact the neighbors.
I, I think that would require a deeper study by Mr. Canjiano. I think, Mr. Canjiano, you simply looked at the survey and saw that all the Ts have been crossed.
Yeah. I've only seen the exhibit that they're showing on the screen. Again, you know, the engineer, Township Engineering Office, I think if we bring up the concerns that were raised at tonight's meeting, and they would look at it closer. Again, it's under their jurisdiction to look at it. I think if we, if they look at it closer and have any other concerns, and they, we would rely on their, their, their review. And I did want to add, this buffer should be in the deed. A proper certified survey that was researched, entitled research, should show up any encumbrances on that property. In addition to town buffer, it could be a deed restriction or, or from a DEP issue being that it's, it's, there could be wetlands back there. So there's any number of variables that could have encumbrances on this property. And I, and I, I really think that they, I think that as the board is alluding to that the, the, we kind of have to go back to the Township Engineering Office for further review and, and wait for their findings.
Okay, those, those are my subject twos.
Mr. Carlson, do you feel like we have those captured adequately?
Oh, I'm sure we will.
Okay. I am seeing that Mr. Mystery would like to make another comment. I guess before we take a vote on this motion.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a second?
He, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Dinsmore.
I was just gonna ask before you go to comments, was there ever a second on the motion?
Natural there was.
Oh, not yet. Okay. I, I'm afraid that I might have gotten lost in the, in all of this. Are, are we ready for a second on that motion? Or, because normally we would allow the to finish their case before we accept the motion. That might have been my fault.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy.
Yes, Mr. Mealy?
Yes, Mr. Dinsmore started to pronounce the motion, but then we got involved with other items. So perhaps he could restate it.
All right. I, I agree with that. But before, Mr. Dinsmore, you make your motion, I, I guess it, it's fair to allow the applicant to give their final case and, and to wrap things up. So, Mr. Mystery, I see you're on mute right now. If you'd like to take yourself off mute and, and give your final statement, we're, we're open to hearing from you at this time.
Can you hear me?
Just go ahead, Mr. Mystery.
Yeah. Going back to the buffer stuff, I noticed that when the neighbor, what's his name, Mr. Hess, last year, he met me outside and he says he's planning to do the construction of the garage in his backyard. And what he explained to me, and the way I understood what he told me is that we have a buffer here and because of the buffer, we cannot do anything. I'm trying to remove the buffer for all, all four properties, but you need to sign the paper. And I remember that I signed that paper to remove the buffer. Okay, so we, all four neighbors can take the advantage of it if we need to do something like what I did it and what he did it up there. You understood what I'm trying to tell you? So by signing that paper, as I understood today, that the buffer is no longer there. Nobody understood what that buffer is all about, including himself. And I guess he did some study, and he took the signature of all the neighbors here to get rid of the buffer. So I don't understand where he's coming from, where he doesn't have a buffer and I still do. Number one. Number two is that delaying this, this, this issue will, will create probably a further problem with the drainage. I like to build the wall and keep Rosa happy. And there's probably the drainage. Then it's a very low wall, probably two, three blocks. That'll, that'll resolve the problem, in my opinion and her opinion. Number three, she mentioned that I put four, five feet of a field. You can come and see it. My average field right here, according to my calculations that I did, it's one foot sixteen inches on an average field that went in the backyard. My lot has always been higher than hers, just because there's no fence there. It's a little bit more visible. But there is no five-foot field that it's gonna skied off and all that. I just wanted to make you know that. Eventually, the wall will go back where it was, and there is no aesthetic problems or any problem whatsoever. That's all I wanted to say. Also, also, when we resurveyed the lot in the beginning, when I was planning to give a copy to the zoning department and everything, I didn't even know where my lot line is. But according to the surveyor, my lot line extended eight feet inside her property. And my surveyor told me that this is your land that was on her court. It's eight feet land from the beginning till the end. Okay, that was, that was our side for last 27 years, which I didn't even know about. Right. So, you know, I'm trying to solve the problem. We are neighbors. We have stayed together for a very long time. I don't see any, any problem other than what they mentioned. It's a problem. You know, and I'm trying to keep everybody happy that, look, if you think there's a drainage problem, I'll build a little bit of a wall up here and spend some money, even though I don't have it right at this point, but I'll manage it. The question is that also, according to the engineer, the township engineer, the email is right here. I can probably forward it to you. And what he mentions is that you can build a wall, but I would rather wait for a soil moving permit. So I'd rather build a wall and get rid of all the questions and concerns that my neighbor has which is contingent upon the, the soil moving permit. You, you know, if the moving permit is not addressed tonight, then this wall is gonna held up according to the township engineer. And the problem still persists and remains. At this point in time, I don't see any problem. Just get the wall done. Going back to the Moore's County Soil Conservation District, they have no questions or concern. They came twice. They gave me a little notice and look, everything seems to be okay. The ground is already stabilized with the lawn. He just need to put more seed and wrap out a little bit of rocks here. And then I did it. Very next day, I had the landscaper spend $600 and got everything done. Beautiful lawn outside, front lawn, backyard. Everything is perfectly flowing as far as the drainage is concerned. Even with the wall, I don't see any problem at all. So.
I understand, Mr. Mystery.
You know, I'm not, yeah.
Yeah, Trevor's so.
I mean, three years, I'm, I'm totally displaced, where I was staying for 25 years in my, I'm trying to move back with my pack. That's all I'm trying to do.
Move.
You know.
I understand that, Mr. Mystery. Mr. Mystery, so I just want to make it clear, the, the buffer is not something this board can remove. And, and so there is no place for that part of the decision in this, in this conversation. And we do have to make our decisions contingent on all other approvals being given.
No, that's fine. But I just wanted to clarify the history behind the buffer, what Mr. Hess explained to me, that by signing this paper, we will not have any buffer for all these people. So we all can take the advantage of this thing. And I signed that paper.
Okay, but that is not part of the, that's not part of what this board will decide. And the paper that you're talking about is, is the matter for another, another board, which I'm not going to speculate which, which location.
No, I just wanted to let you know what I know about the buffer. That's all.
That's fine. And, and also, the, the only thing you provided from the Morris County Soil Conservation District in your evidence was a notice that your application was incomplete. Nothing that said that they accepted or approved of your, of your project as it was. So we can't move forward on evidence that you haven't presented.
Well, the comments, they have the administrative incompleteness, and they pointed out two things which my engineer is trying to address it. I don't think it has any severe consequences or issues at this point. It's just for his administrative purpose that something is missing in the plan and he's trying to get it. That's all.
No, I understand. You just brought it up. So, yeah, I understand. You brought it up as something that was accept, that should be accepted, but that's not the case. Your engineer's testimony is certainly something that we accept here. Okay. Mr. Mystery, does that include, conclude your presentation? Okay. At this time then, I will accept a motion from the board.
Well, I'm going to go back to a subject two. I believe that it's probably reasonable to give what he needs, but we have to have from the engineer that if he reviewed it, knowing about what the actual technical details of the buffer zone are, which I don't think can be removed. I, I'm not a lawyer. I can't say I play one on TV. But having neighbors sign a document is unlikely to cause a buffer to disappear. So we have to have the engineer look into this with some knowledge of what the buffer zone requires and allows. If the engineer realizes that what is allowed would, or what the buffer zone does is preclude some of the things that they're trying to do, then we have to face that going forward. So my motion is simply to approve the soil moving permit subject to the engineer reviewing the application again with better knowledge of what the buffer zone is or is not. Does that cover?
That sounds good to me, Mr. Dinsmore. Do we have a second for Mr. Dinsmore?
Second, Mandel.
Okay. Nora, would you please call a vote?
Aperilic. Aperilic.
Nick?
DiPiero.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Fugieri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Mandel.
Yes.
Aperilic.
Yes, there are too many unanswered questions for me and conditions. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, there are too many unanswered questions and conditions and incompleteness to the application for me to give approval tonight.
Okay, so it's a no vote, correct?
No, it's a no vote.
Mr. Mealy?
No.
Von Aiken?
Yes.
It's approved.
Okay, very good. Mr. Mystery, thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate the contributions of the public on this matter. This will be conditioned on the engineering review. So it's probably in your best interest to not move forward with any expenses on this and to keep in touch with the town engineer. All right. Very good. All right. Just, just a check with the, with the board. Is everybody okay to continue forward? I, that application took a little longer than I expected. Does anybody need a break?
Yes.
Okay, then let's make it a five-minute break. And when we return, we will take on application 20,514, which is the Route 46. All right, so if the, if the applicant wants to prepare while the board takes a five-minute break, that would be efficient. Thank you very much.
Can we leave?
Mr. Mystery, you're, you're all set.
Okay, and when can I take the paperwork and go see the engineer? Tomorrow? Can I do that or?
Nora? When, when will be ready for?
No, no, no. The resolution has to be adopted. That happens in two weeks if I have the resolution. After that, it gets out to him a few days, you know, after that. He also has to go to zoning. I'm sorry. It's, um, let me back up a little. It gets adopted, then you have to comply with the conditions of the resolution, and you'll go deal with the engineer and department. You very well may have a new survey made. Was this a new home?
No, it was a pre-existing home. No, it was a pre-existing home.
No, no, no.
Because it burned out, so we redo.
You had a fire?
Yes.
So I'm asking you rebuilt a new home, correct?
Yes.
Okay, your as-built survey, did you have one yet or no, from, for the zoning department to sign off on?
Yes, yes, that's been completed so far.
Okay, was the buffer on that?
Uh, I gotta check, I don't have it handy right at this point. I'll show you to you, yeah.
That would be something to look at, in my opinion.
Okay.
And then you would want to take that to the engineering department, but it's, it's up to you to go over there to, you know, speak with them and take up this issue.
Okay, I'll speak to you, no problem. So I, I understand, yes.
And then once, and then once documentation is presented back here, um, I guess if somebody wanted the board engineer to look at it and approve it, otherwise, um, it's, it's up to the, um, township engineer and you go back to zoning and get your permit.
Good.
Yep.
All right, I'll speak to you now. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mystery.
Thank you, Nora.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I think we're at about the five-minute mark. Um, is the applicant, uh, ready to present? Hello, can anybody hear me? Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mr. Walker.
It's, no, it's Roy Kernos, I'm the attorney for the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kernos, thank you. Just hold on one second, I just want to make sure you were ready. Uh, I want to make sure the board is assembled so that we can all hear your testimony. Okay. Okay. All right. So at this time, uh, Earl, it, um, I see Mr. Mystery is still a presenter, we can remove him. Um, and is there anybody else still there?
This is Mr. Rappaport, I'm, I'm one of the owners of Route forty-six Park Plaza.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Rappaport. All right. Uh, let's see, uh, it looks like we still have a few of our members who haven't come back yet. Um, I'd like to hold at least for Mr. Fergieri, um, and Ms. Favate. I see Susan has joined us. And it looks like Mr. Fergieri is here. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just needed some Halloween candy, apologies.
I, hey, it says something about your, your willpower that you still have Halloween candy.
Well, it's not mine, it's my children's.
Of course. All right. Mr. Kernos, um, go ahead and introduce yourself and your project, and then we'll go ahead with, uh, a review of, of the waivers.
Okay, uh, my name is Roy Kernos, KULS, currently in Forest Town with Belso and Kernos, Free Prospect Street in Morris Town. Uh, I represent Route forty-six Park Plaza Associates LLC. They're the owners of Block one thirty-six, Lot sixty-six point oh one. The property is located in the B-one zone. It's at the intersection of Route forty-six East and Lackawanna Avenue and Walsh Drive. Uh, the applicant here seeks a two-lot minor subdivision. The, uh, property is improved by, uh, two buildings, one a former, uh, TGIF Friday's Restaurant, and the second an office building. And what the applicant plans to do is just to, uh, subdivide the lots. So the, uh, office building is on one and the, um, uh, restaurant building is on the other. There'll be cross easements for parking and ingress and egress. Um, we need several variances, um, one of which is Lot sixty-six oh two, uh, which will be the, uh, restaurant, will be, uh, ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven square feet, where a hundred and twenty thousand is required. Uh, we need a reduction of one parking space on Lot sixty-six oh one, which will provide a hundred and thirty-five parking spaces instead of the hundred and thirty-six. And, um, we would like to allow, uh, parking on the sidelines, um, uh, where, uh, the parking by the ordinance requires a ten-foot, a setback. The parking will be exactly as it is today's, um, without the, um, without the variances. Uh, we also have some pre-existing non-conforming, um, uh, properties, uh, the office building is thirty-seven point three feet high, the ordinance requires, uh, thirty-five. Uh, there are others concerning the minimum gross floor area of the one-story building, which will be the restaurant. Ten thousand square feet is required, and the existing restaurant building is a nine thousand two hundred and sixty-nine square feet. Uh, the, um, the height of the monument sign for the office building, uh, six feet is permitted, and the existing sign is eight point eight. Uh, the minimum sign setback on Route forty-six, twenty-four feet is required, and the freestanding restaurant sign is setback nineteen feet. Uh, and the minimum sign setback on Walsh Drive, fifteen feet is required, and the freestanding office building sign is, uh, three point two feet from the right of way. I have, uh, two witnesses tonight, um, aside from the owner, uh, Mark Walker, who is our engineer, and John McDonough, who is a, uh, a planner who will speak to the, uh, variance issues. So I would like to, uh, have Mark, Mr. Walker sworn in. I could, I could waider him as to his credentials unless he's known to the board, uh, to be accepted as a licensed, uh, civil engineer of the state of New Jersey.
Uh, that's fine, but, um, before we move forward with that, I would like to cover the waivers, um, with our, with our board planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we recommended a series of waivers, which I will not enumerate. Um, there are many of them, largely because this is essentially a, a line modification. It's just a pure subdivision, there appears to be no actual development proposed. Um, so many of the, these checklist requirements are not applicable. Uh, there's no building, uh, there's no other site improvement. So we recommended, um, variation from many of these checklist requirements.
Okay, and, uh, provided the board has had the ability to review all the waivers as provided in the packet, um, I'll entertain a motion to accept the waivers as presented.
I move the waivers as, uh, presented in the BFJ Planning Memo, dated July twenty-second, twenty-twenty.
Okay, it's second?
For Jerry, for Jerry's second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, no one opposed, the waivers are acceptable. Uh, Mr. Kernos, you may call your first witness.
And Mark Walker.
All right, Mark Walker, go, please raise your hand. And I have to pull up my notes of, uh, of our, uh, swearing statement. Um, do you swear the testimony you are about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And would you please provide the board with the benefits of your credentials?
Uh, sure, I hold a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a master's degree in environmental engineering, been licensed as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey for twenty-eight years, and I've been a principal at the Dykshire Walker Design Group for twenty-two years. I've testified in front of this board on, uh, several occasions, but not recently. Um, and I've testified in front of just about every, uh, every town in Morris County.
Very good. Do any members of the board have any questions about this witness? All right, Mr. Walker, you're an acceptable witness. Uh, Mr. Kernos, please move forward.
Uh, Mr. Walker, would you, uh, please explain, uh, the, uh, the site and what the applicant, uh, uh, is trying to do here?
Absolutely, um, the property is located in the, uh, the B-one highway commercial zone, uh, which requires a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, uh, to create a individual lot. Um, so we're actually trying to create two lots, so we'd need two hundred and thirty-thousand square feet. The existing lot is two hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and eight square feet. So we're just shy by approximately thirty-five hundred square feet of having the total lot area required, uh, without any variances. Um, what we have done is, uh, we've selected a place, um, what I'd like to do is, if I could, share the screen and bring up an exhibit. We practiced this earlier today, all right?
Can we make Mr. Walker a presenter, please?
He is.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so this is a, uh, this is a, uh, rendered plan, uh, of the site plan that the board has, um, in front of them. Um, there's just one discrepancy that I want to bring up for the board's purposes. We did receive a letter from the tax assessor that wanted the office building noted as Lot sixty-six oh two, and the restaurant as sixty-six oh three. Uh, all the reports that we have to date list the office building as sixty-six oh one, and the restaurant is sixty-six oh two. Um, so with that in mind, there's a slight modification in the, uh, the lot numbers. Uh, and this exhibit shows the lot numbers that are, uh, intended to be as part of the tax assessor. So I'd like to mark this exhibit in as, uh, Exhibit A-one, uh, with today's date. And as I mentioned, it's a, uh, rendered, uh, exhibit of the site plan that has been submitted to the board. And we have, uh, we've rendered, uh, the plan, so it's more easily visible. You can see the paved areas, you can see the proposed property line in red, and the proposed easement lines are shown in blue. Um, the property has frontage on, uh, Route forty-six, uh, also has frontage on Lackawanna Ave at the, at the top of the site, next to the restaurant, and the main access is Walsh Drive. You can see we have an ingress and egress point. Can anybody see my pointer? On the exhibit? Okay, so that's our main, uh, ingress, uh, ingress and egress point on Walsh Drive. Uh, we also have a right-in and right-out coming off from, uh, Route forty-six, uh, eastbound. Um, the, uh, the office building, as I mentioned, we have shown as Lot sixty-six oh two, and the, uh, former TGIF Friday's Restaurant, is Lot sixty-six point oh three. Um, we've selected a location of the property line, which in our minds made, uh, a tremendous amount of sense. Uh, we've, we've designated the property line to split a parking bay, uh, as you can see I'm pointing through there. Uh, and that separates the two parking areas. Uh, it's been, uh, proposed in this location to try to balance the parking out as the intended uses were, uh, originated. Um, it does create a variance for lot area. Um, proposed Lot sixty-six oh two, which is the office building, uh, has more than enough property at a hundred and forty thousand five hundred and thirty-one square feet, whereas the, the restaurant property was slightly under what's allowed at ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven square feet. So with that in mind, we took a look at impervious coverage, setbacks, and building coverage to make sure, uh, that, uh, everything was in conformance. Um, so we, uh, we found that we're meeting all the setback lines, and we have ample lot coverage and, uh, building coverage, uh, for each property. Uh, the lot line that is proposed, uh, would be a rear setback line, and the restaurant is approximately seventy-two feet from the, uh, the proposed rear setback line. The backyard setback requirement, uh, in this zone is fifty feet, so, uh, it's, it's about twenty-two feet more, uh, than what is required. Uh, so, uh, we felt that the property line location made a lot of sense. Um, the parking layout, uh, requirement for the, uh, for the restaurant is a hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces. Uh, we actually ended up with a hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces based on this property line designation. And looking, uh, to the north over here, we have one parking space that is intersected by the property line. We've used that parking space and counted it towards the restaurant. Uh, whereas the, uh, the parking, uh, for the office building is one parking space short at, uh, a hundred and thirty-five parking spaces, where a hundred and thirty-six parking spaces are required. So as you can see, we're, it, it does make a lot of sense what the property line is in the designation, uh, of the parking spaces. Um, the other thing that we had to consider when laying out this plan was the impact of services to the building. services to the buildings. We do have the water service which comes off from Walsh Drive. And as you can see in this blue easement area that we designated, the water line comes off and then goes into the office building. So the, the blue easement is shown for the water line is benefits lot 66.02 for the office building. There's also a sewer main that services both buildings that leads down to Route 46 east. So for lot 6603, an easement, a sewer easement that had to be created that would benefit lot 66.03. Just in case there was any issue with the pipe, it gives them the ability to go in onto lot 6602, make any repairs that may be necessary to ensure that there's adequate sewer service in that area. The third easement area was, was simply a stormwater, a storm drain that directs an inlet that picks up stormwater on 6602 and directs it to a detention basin on lot 66.03. The remainder of the site for 6602, the stormwater is actually directed to another detention basin that is on lot 66.02. So Mr. Cronos had gone to and listed the variances. There's one other variance that I want to just quickly mention. There's a minimum building size or minimum gross floor area that's required for a building on any lot. With respect to the restaurant, the building was 9,269 square feet, where a minimum building size of 10,000 square feet is required. So kind of an odd requirement and we're actually coming up a little small on our building. The building has been there for a long time and fits in well with the parking layout and configuration proposed. We do have one other variance that was created as a result of this property line that we have proposed. There's a provision in the ordinance that says that all parking spaces must be 10 feet from the property line, just from the designation of our property line, which runs right through a parking bay. We're actually providing zero feet of separation, so a variance is, is needed for that. Again, one of the most important things to recognize here is that there's absolutely no improvements proposed. It's just a lot line that's drawn on the map. No one will notice that there is now two lots versus one lot. And I could actually imagine that everybody may have thought that this was two lots to begin with. But that's, that is a basic application. We do have some nonconformities relative to signage and some other parking, but those are all pre-existing nonconforming conditions. And they're not exacerbated by the proposed subdivision that we have shown here.
Okay, does that conclude your testimony, Mr. Cronos?
I have no further questions of Mr. Walker.
Okay, with that said, Ms. Pavate, do you have any questions for Mr. Walker?
Yeah, the only other question was a comment we raised in our memo about the, we believe there's another variance required on the freestanding sign on Walsh Drive. Just because with the new subdivision line, it will actually be off, off the property of the office building, which it serves, and that, that is a noncompliance issue with the signage ordinance. So we believe there's another variance that you could add to the list.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Mr. Cagiano, do you have any questions for Mr. Walker?
No, as the applicant stated, there's no change to existing conditions. And I, I don't have any additional comments. I did bring up a comment in my letter that they addressed that there should be a blanket parking easement or parking easement between both facilities for use of the lot. I don't have anything else.
Okay. Do any members of the board have questions for Mr. Walker? Okay, not seeing any, any questions from the board. I have one myself, two rather. The, the parking not being 10 feet from the property line, if you were, you know, if there were to be a, a change to the layout, it seems like you would have difficulty achieving the necessary number of parking spots if you were to, if you were to be in compliance with this. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And should the property ownership change hands or, you know, you certainly have a cordial relationship with the owners of both lots that, you know, both proposed lots at this time, but should that ever change? It, it seems as if that 10-foot space may be something that comes up in the future.
Well, as Mr. Cagiano just mentioned, we are going to have cross-access and cross-parking easements. So, you know, we're fortunate in that we have two separate and distinct uses where the office building is typically peaking with its parking during the daytime and the restaurant would normally peak on a Friday or Saturday night. So where there would be less parking spaces within the office area that the restaurant could use. So that, that, that dynamic always existed when Fridays was operating. There would be a lot of people there on a Friday or Saturday night and they would park sometimes in the, the office parking area. So allowing those cross-parking and access easements allows the site to operate exactly as it, as it always operated.
Okay, it's just when, when splitting a lot, we also have to account for the potential changes that may occur as, as ownership changes. Certainly, future owners would be aware of these easements when, when they take over the property. I just have to make sure that the properties function well. You know, should that change occur also?
That's correct.
Okay.
They would be put in the deed and held in perpetuity.
Very good. The, the other, the other point is the sign variance that, that was raised. You know, it seems like, I, I don't see necessarily a need to, to change the sign right now, but in the future, you know, should there be an ownership change? You know, I, I think that's something that certainly the new owners could revisit. And I, I think that would be a fair requirement that should future owners want to have that sign removed, they, that easement should not probably be something that's, that's permanent. Is there an opinion from our planner on that?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that if, if you were to grant this, the sign variance tonight, there would be nothing that would stop a future owner from, from moving the location of the sign, and I believe that would not require them to come back to this board. That would be something that could be done administratively within this planning department.
Okay. Thank you for, for your opinion on that matter. I appreciate it. All right. Any other questions from the board at this time of this witness? Okay, Mr. Cronos, do you have any other witnesses to present?
Yes, I do. I have John McDonough, a planner, to testify as to the C variances that the applicant is seeking.
Okay.
I hope he's here.
I'm waving. I'm, I'm waving in the upper left. I don't know where I am on everybody.
All right. Ms. McDonough? Please raise your hand so I can swear you in. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And would you please provide the board with the benefits of your credentials?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is our national certification, and I testify in this capacity throughout the state of New Jersey and here in Porcelli as well, this is where my office is.
All right. Does the board have any questions for, regarding Mr. McDonough's credentials? All right, seeing nothing, Mr. McDonough, your credentials are accepted. Please continue with your testimony, Mr. Cronos.
Mr. McDonough, you have walked the site and visited this site on a number of occasions?
Yes, I did. Yes, I have.
And you are, you understand the variances that are required, are you not?
I am.
Okay, could you go through them, please?
Sure, and I think, Mr. Chairman, as a predicate to my planning conclusions, I'm going to steal the screen from Mark here and put up some of my own exhibits with your permission.
That's entirely acceptable. Earl, are we all set for that? Mr. McDonough will be taking over the presentation.
Okay.
He is.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, you should be ready to go.
Yep, let me just close out a couple of other screens because I learned today not to put too many things on the screen or Earl will yell at me. Bear with me one, one sec here. There we go, okay. So this is going to be a five-part exhibit. It's just to augment Mark's testimony that for the most part, what you see is what you get. This is going to create a line that's mostly going to be, I'll say, for financial or legal purposes to facilitate the redevelopment of these sites, the rehab of these sites. We're looking at the subject property in the first frame outlined in yellow, and this will be an aerial view with Route 46 running left and right or east to the left and west to the right, heading towards Mountain Lakes and Denville. North would be to the bottom and south would be to the top towards.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Were these provided in our packet? I don't seem to have them in front of me.
I don't believe they were. They're just photographs.
Okay, we still will need to identify these. So a packet of five photographs is, is going to be identified as Exhibit A1.
I think it's A2, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, I believe you're correct. So this packet of five photographs will be A2.
Okay, and the essence of these exhibits again are to highlight the physical characteristic of the property and the surrounding land use context. The point is that this is an already developed piece of property. It's slightly over five acres in size, which is well above double the ordinance minimum requirement in the B1 Highway Zone. That's important because we're, we're looking, we have an applicant here that's looking to, I'll say, chop the property in half. One of the lots are going to be undersized, one is going to be oversized. But again, as I'll say, a shared development. We're looking at a, at a landmass that is above and beyond what the B1 Zone requirement is. So the applicant is asking the board to move on, on three variances here, and we'll go through each one of them. But again, to establish the rationale, a lot on the left or to the east is going to be identified as 6.02. The one on the right is going to be identified as 6.03. 6.03 houses the former Fridays, which was closed about a year ago, towards the end of 2009. And then a multi-level office building. We work our way to some hotels and we start to head east and then, of course, to more non-residential development as we work our way to the south. And then finally residential development on the other side of, side of Route 46. But again, what you see is what you get. No physical change being proposed here. Mr. Walker has done a good job of striking a line that's reasonably balanced down the middle, maintaining the parking stalls as they presently exist, so a very easy retrofit or repurpose of that which is presently there. Next frame just shows what's on the property now on 6.02 to the left. That's what the office building looked like yesterday when I was out there, and this is from Route 46. And then the next frame, looking to the right, is what the restaurant looks like or the former TGIFs looks like today. Next frame shows where that line is going to strike down the middle. So you get the office building on the left, you get the Fridays on the right. And again, it's going to be an imaginary line, no physical change. That's going to trigger the lot area variance, that's going to trigger the parking variance of one space and also a setback variance because there's no setback going to be associated with these parking spaces, which are located head-on with, with one another. And the last variance that the applicant is seeking relief on is for this sign that you see here on the entrance off of Walsh Drive. When a line is struck about three spaces in, and then again, running down the center of those spaces between the two buildings, that will put this sign, which is a roadside identification sign for the office use, on the restaurant side. So technically, it's a variance under Section 430-284, subsection H, subsection 6, which says that a sign needs to advertise the business that's on its, its premises. So it's essentially a variance related to the copy and to the business that it's, it's advertising. It's again a technical variance, but I agree with your planner that it does require relief as well. With all of that said, just flipping back again to the practical side of this application, the board is being asked to move on three variances. The first is lot area pertaining to lot 6.02 or the office lot, 95,977 square feet versus a requirement of 120,000 square feet in the B1 Zone. This is reconcilable. In fact, all variances here are reconcilable under the C2 balancing test whereby the benefits of the application as, as a whole substantially outweigh the detriments. On the positive side, if one of the main obvious things here is that this is going to eliminate two uses on one lot. In your B, in your B1 Zone, you do allow for multiple uses within a building, but not two buildings on a lot. So this is going to fix that by striking a line down the middle. You can have multiple office tenants, you can have multiple retail tenants, but they each have to be in their own building. The two buildings here, for whatever reason, back in 1988 when this was constructed, were two uses on, are two buildings on one particular piece of property. So again, this is going to fix that by putting each building situate on its own lot, which also has a, a financial benefit to it in terms of being able to, for lenders to use the subject sites or the land as collateral for any type of financing. So it makes the site cleaner, not only from a planning standpoint, from a physical planning standpoint, but perhaps also from, I'll say, a mortgage or from a lending standpoint as well. That will facilitate the viability of, of the redevelopment or the repurposing of, of these parcels. Counterbalancing that with the negative criteria. Importantly, the effective land area is going to be here. You heard through counsel's testimony of the cross-access easements and the cross-easements for parking and the like. So from a physical planning standpoint, this will remain as one intact planned commercial development. Second variance that the applicant is asking the board to move on is the parking supply related to, again, I think this is actually the office use as well, 66.02. 135 being proposed, whereas 136 is required. You heard through Mr. Walker's testimony that one of the spaces are actually going to be straddling the proposed lot line just because it's cleaner in terms of striking the line down the middle. So again, it's a minimalist variance. The effective parking supply will work as well, similar justification to the land area relief. And then finally, as I said before, relief related to the row of parking that are both head-on, also justifiable under the C2 balancing test based on the shared nature of the development. And then finally, the variance for that sign, which is actually going to be on the restaurant side as opposed to the office side. Better to just leave the sign there than pick it up and, and move it. Again, I believe a, a better zoning alternative keeps the sign close to the driveway that will serve this particular development. And again, for all of the reasons that I said, the benefits of the application as a whole will substantially outweigh the detriments. This is not atypical. We see this in some of the corporate campuses here in the community. We see it in our shopping malls and retail centers where these parcels are carved out, again, for legal or financial reasons. That said, this is not atypical with what the applicant is doing here, and I believe the board can move favorably on the application as promoting purpose A, the land use law, the purpose that promotes the general welfare, without creating any substantially adverse impacts on the public at large or impairment to the intent and purpose of your zone plan. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll pause for. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll pause for, for any questions or redirect from council, but I believe this applicant has met its burden and approval is warranted.
Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Vavate, do you have any questions for Mr. McDonough?
I do not, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set.
All right, Ms. Cagiano?
No que, no questions.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. McDonough at this time? All right. Mr. Cronos, do you have any other witnesses for tonight?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay, does that conclude your presentation?
Mr. Chairman, I have one, one comment I just want to clarify. There's a little confusion in the lot numbers. So it's actually the restaurant lot that is 6603. That's the one that's a little short of lot area. That's the one that needs the lot area variance. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you for the clarification. So I believe, just to put that on the record, 66.02 is the office, 66.03 is the restaurant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. At this time, are there any members of the public that have questions for any of the witnesses that have been presented so far? I'll pause to give you a chance to raise your hands. Okay. Not seeing any questions from the public. Are there any comments from the public? Okay, and still not seeing any. Any comments from the board?
Just a question, if I may.
Please go ahead.
I understand this is, this is being done for business reasons, but just out of curiosity, is there a potential company that's going to be buying TGI Fridays that we can look forward to?
I'll answer that question. Although the owner is here, Mr. Rappaport, he could probably answer that question without me testifying.
I can, I can answer that, Roy, if you want.
Go ahead.
Yes, the, the buyer of it is the same operator that owns, I think, six or seven other restaurants, one of which I believe is the old Black Bull up above on 46. I, I don't know their name, Mr. Zollis Wood. They also own Seer in, in Wayne and, and, and some other locations. I believe they plan on putting a, a higher-end Mexican restaurant in, and Spanish restaurant in this location.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, it's, it's the Barker Restaurant, B-A-R-K-A restaurant. It used to be the Black Bull. It's located in Mountain Lakes on the eastbound side, near the car wash.
Okay. Any other questions from, from the board or comments from the board at this time? All right. I am not seeing anybody with their hands up or anybody speaking up. So at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Cronos, do you have anything else to present to the board?
No, sir, the hour is late. It's a fairly simple application, and I'm not really Giuliani, so I, I'm not going to speak.
All right, very good. I'll obtain a motion from the board then at this time.
Mr. Chairman, in application 2514, Route 46, Park Plaza Associates, I move that we grant this minor subdivision slash site plan with the C variances outlined in our discussion before, the sign, the backyard setback. What are the ones that I'm? Ms. Vavate, do you have that?
Minimum lot size, number of parking spaces, and.
Oh, yes.
Square footage.
Yeah, those are, those are pre-existing, yeah.
I move that, because I believe this is a good application, I move the resolution.
All right. So, Mr. Dinsmore, I believe you're, you're motioning you'd like to accept the application as is with the variances that are stated?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second, Hernandez.
Very good. All right.
Very good.
All right. Dora, would you please take the vote?
Mr. Perelik?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore? Yes? Councilman D. Piero?
Yes.
Mr. Fergeri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Hernandez. Yes!
Mr. Mendel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations. I believe we've accepted this, this application's been approved. Correct, Ms. Jolie?
Thank you very much for your.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.
You too.
All right. And we have one more application to hear tonight. That would be application number 20:521, MCC Blue, 400 Interpace Parkway, Block 136, Lots 43.05, amended preliminary and final major site plan. Let's get the, the applicants changed out and in place.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joseph O'Neill on this application. I'm going to need Edwin Cavalero elevated to a panelist for this. I believe he's down in attendance somewhere.
It looks like we got him moved up.
He is. He moved.
And this, Mr. O'Neill?
No, that's going to be it, I think.
All right. Thank you with your patience so far tonight. It's gone a little bit longer than we hoped for, but I appreciate you, you sticking with us.
Thank you for hearing it.
Okay. Are the board members ready? Okay. Mr. O'Neill, you may start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendment to a preliminary and final site plan granted back in 2019, I believe, regarding this property. We're amending it to bank nine spaces in one of the parking lots due to a problem we discovered with existing utilities, and we're adding two EV charging stations. That's the application. Hopefully, it'll take longer to do the waivers than it will to do the actual application here. So if we can just go ahead and address those.
All right, very well. Ms. Vavate?
We'll see about, we'll see about that. I, I don't feel that I need to go through every waiver given the hour, but we did recommend a series of waivers, given the fact that you heard this application about a year ago. And it's, it's fairly minor in scope. There's no new building proposed. It's really just, just slight changes to the phasing of the parking, the parking lot provision as well as the EV spaces. We did ask for additional testimony, which I assume Mr. O'Neill and his witnesses will provide, on signage, fences and walls, utilities and, and lighting. Other than that, we recommended all those waivers.
Okay. Can I hear a motion with regards to accepting the waivers?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the waivers as presented in the BFJ Planning Memo of September 3, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Dinsmore. Do we have a second?
Second for Jerry.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay. Waivers have been approved. Mr. O'Neill, you may continue.
Thank you. I'd like to bring in, get sworn, Mr. Cavalero. Ask that he be made a presenter, and then, Edwin, if you don't mind, going right to the proposed conditions of what we're going to label as P1, pardon me, A1 for this evening as our exhibits.
Okay, Mr. Cavalero, I need to swear you in. I need your video also on. There you are. Hey. Hand raised, all ready to go. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I can't hear you, Mr. Cavalero.
You did. I do.
Very good. Please provide us with the benefits of your credentials.
I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from NJIT back in 1979. I've been a professional engineer in New Jersey since 1999. I have over 40 years of experience in preparing site plans and subdivisions for the firm, and I have, I've been accepted and testified before numerous planning boards, including the Parcipity Troy Hills Planning Board. I did an application on this same very project in 2017 for the parking deck, and I also did testimony for Ferring Pharmaceutical for the parking lot expansion.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Cavalero regarding his credentials? All right, seeing none, Mr. Cavalero, you're accepted as a witness. Mr. O'Neill, please continue.
Thank you. Mr. Cavalero, if we can go right to the proposed conditions. Do you have the power to share the screen there?
He does.
Okay.
Okay. Our first exhibit is entitled Pre-Construction Aerial Exhibit. It's prepared by Mazer Consulting on November 23, 2020. That would be labeled as Exhibit A. And just for the board's reference, Upper Pond Road is located on the southerly property line along.
We can't see the exhibit.
May I interrupt? Do you have more than one screen on your computer?
I do.
You're sharing the wrong one.
Sharing the wrong, okay.
We have your desktop.
Did it come up now? No.
We're seeing the blue screen where your mouse is currently. I can see it in the lower left-hand side now. Okay, I think you're all set.
All right, thank you. Again, Upper Pond Road is located on the southerly property line, basically along the bottom of the screen here. Interpace Parkway is located along the westerly side of the property, and then Walsh Drive is located along the northerly/westerly side of the property. There are office and industrial facilities along all sides of our existing property. Our second exhibit is entitled Comparison Exhibit. It's again, prepared by Mazer Consulting, and it's dated November 23, 2020. And that should be labeled as Exhibit A2. Back in February 25 of 2019, the board granted approval for the expansion of the westerly Building A parking lot by 154 spaces as part of a total 226 of parking space site plan. Basically, along the left side of the exhibit was the previously approved Building A parking lot. There is an existing water line which runs through and also an existing electrical conduit which runs through the originally proposed access drive for the parking lot. Basically, I'm showing on the right side, we, we shifted the driveway and the space count to reduce the parking spaces down to 145 spaces. In doing so, we shifted the ax in a southerly direction, going back to the left side exhibit. Basically, in a southerly direction, approximately 30 feet. This would avoid the costly relocation of the two utility lines, the water easement, the water line, and also the electrical conduit. We would temporarily lose nine spaces as part of our application. We're requesting that the nine spaces be banked in, in case those spaces are needed anywhere in the future. Again, on the right-hand side, a part of the application, we are proposing to add two charging stations to serve four spaces. Those are basically located in the existing parking lot on the west side of Building A. We have also supplemented the landscaping that was added at the request of the municipal officials. Additional landscaping and shrubs are being proposed along the west side of the parking lot, between the parking lot and Interpace Parkway to increase the screening of the parking lot itself. And, let's go. My third exhibit is entitled Site Color Rendering. That's of the Layout Plan Sheet 5. It was prepared again by Mazer Consulting, dated November 23, 2020. Basically, in the right-hand corner, in Building B parking lot, we are replacing the existing basketball court with 33 parking spaces. This has not changed since the February 2019 approval. In the lower right-hand corner, along the southeast side of Building B and C, the parking lot was slightly shifted as coordinated in the field with the fire official and the municipal engineer, and that was to allow the relocation of a hydrant back behind this small access aisle. In it, this still maintained the 39 parking spaces in this lot, and then there was additional landscaping also placed at the face of the, of building for Building B and C wall. The three areas of the site have been constructed basically as designed, all with the exception of the two charging stations basically located here. The current construction was inspected and signed off by the municipal engineer, and he issued a letter in September 21, basically 2020, stating that the total number of parking spaces previously approved base are, remain the same. We had 1,855 spaces plus the nine banked spaces to maintain the 1,864 spaces that were previously approved. The prior bulk tables components have not changed in complying with the original application. With regards to stormwater, since there's been no change in the impervious coverage from the, from the full build-out, the previous stormwater management system, which was constructed, still complies with the original approval. With regards to lighting, we had a minor modification that was required due to the minor shift, but the prior light levels are generally maintained. With regards to signage, it stated we added, we are adding signage at the two charging stations for the, to serve the four parking spaces. No other proposed signage or any changes to the signage. No other proposed signage or any changes to the signage would occur. We have previously received certification from the Morris County Soil Conservation District. That certification was dated July 24, 2019, and we also received a continuing approval letter from Morris County Planning Board that's dated April 22, 2019. And that's basically finishing my testimony. We did receive a letter from the engineer, basically requesting some testimony in regards to the utility conflict and the status of the construction. Basically, all the construction has been completed except for the two electrical charging stations. We also received a letter from the planner to provide a sign detail for the electrical charging station, which we have no objections and we can certainly comply with. And we also had received a letter from the Water Department on the future private water main improvements for the relocation of the water line if the nine spaces, the mine bank spaces, go forward, and we would work with the water company to satisfy basically their requests on how they want to adjust the improvements. That is my testimony.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Mr. Cagiano, do you have any questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Cavalero?
Just one question. Since the spaces are being banked and they're not being asked to be removed from the application, in the future, should these spaces be needed? What utility impacts does that have? Could you just explain that a little bit clearer?
Yes. On the comparison exhibit, there's basically an existing water line that goes underneath where the originally proposed access drive was, and then again, there's also an existing electrical conduit which was go, again, underneath some of the parking spaces, and what we did was we just shifted the access drive approximately 30 feet and, you know, adjusted to bank those nine spaces in order to be clear from those existing utilities.
Right. So my question is, what would need to be done if these bank spaces ever need to be used?
Okay. Based on our communication with the Water Department, we would have to install a new eight-inch line which would connect to Upper Pond Road and basically run on, I would say, the right side of the existing access drive and make a right turn and basically go toward the building, right in front of the building in this area. That would connect to an existing water main just prior to the existing parking lot, and that would be an eight-inch main.
And the electric?
And the electric would basically be reset at a lower elevation to provide the proper cover.
So what you're saying is it is feasible. I'm not suggesting not to bank them. I'm just looking in the future if they need to be used. It is possible that they could be instructed in a future date?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cagiano. Ms. Favate, did you have any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman. He answered all the questions I had. I think some of you may recall that we were suggesting banking some spaces in the original application, so can't say that we're sorry to see some of these get banked, so no concerns here.
All right, very good. Do any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Cavalero? Okay. I can't see anybody's hand here, so I'm going to say we're good. Mr. O'Neill, do you have any other witnesses?
No, that concludes the application, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'd like to thank Ms. Favate for not explicitly saying I told you so, but we think this is a, the addition of the EV charging stations is going to be a real feather in the cap of this property here. It's going to make it very attractive. So that's something we're looking forward to doing, and the utility problem is just something we're going to have to deal with down the line if they want to use those spaces.
I appreciate that, Mr. O'Neill. I know, you know, EV charging spaces is something that several members are very interested in, so you're certainly working towards their interests there. Any members of the public have any questions or comments for the witnesses presented at this time? I'll entertain questions or comments. Okay. Seeing no hands raised, are there any other comments from the board at this time? Okay. Not hearing anybody speak up. Mr. O'Neill, I think you've already given your summary. Is that it?
That's it. I'll just rest on what we provided.
Okay, very good. With that said, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, in application 20:521, MCC Blue, 400 Interpace Parkway, I move that we grant the amended preliminary and final major site plan with the change in the parking and with the allowance of the banking of the parking, which frankly, I'd be very surprised to see you actually ever use, but we'll see.
We'll see.
For numerous reasons. Very good. Do we have a second to Mr. Dinsmore? Was that Ms. Hernandez?
That's Ms. Hernandez.
All right, all right. Nora, would you please take the vote?
Perellic. D. Piero.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Fergeri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Hernandez. Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Mealy. Perellic. Mealy. Von Aken.
Yes.
It's enough to approve.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you too. All right. So there's another meeting under our belts, board. Thank you very much for bearing with us. I know we've got a lot of backlog that we're trying to work our way through, so it's important that we try to get through the things that are on the agenda. I hope that throughout the meeting tonight, you know, we did things appropriately, and of course, if you had any feedback for me regarding how any part of this meeting was handled, feel free to reach out to me individually. I appreciate it always. And-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr.-
I'm sorry, I had muted. Mr. Perellic would like to vote.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Sorry about that.
I have no problem with that, Mr. Amelia and Mr. Perellic. We're good to have you on the record. All right.
Just one comment, if I may.
Oh, please go ahead, Mr. D. Piero.
Scott didn't sound too well tonight. I wasn't aware. Does he have a virus or something?
I'm not fully versed on Scott's condition. Scott, are you still on? Is there anything you want to share with the board, or, you know, certainly that's your personal business?
He just sounded under the weather. Hope he feels better.
No, that's very good of you to say, and I share your sympathies or concerns or, you know, just well wishes.
And everybody have a happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Cool. Thank you, Councilman. You too.
To all of you. See you next week.
Okay.
Stay safe, everyone.
Take care, everyone.
Adjourn, and we're out of here.
We do need to have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Mendel.
All right.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed.
None. Okay. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.